We call the board a directors meeting of the Eugene School District 4J. For order. It's Wednesday, February 16th, 2022 at 7:04 PM. And we have all, we have all board members present with six of us in the room. We have Martina, Gordon, Laurel, Maya, Mary, and Judy in the room, and we have Alicia present on Zoom. So we have a short meeting tonight, and we have really two agenda items to discuss. And if it's, the, the first one is really to talk about the superintendent search. I'm switching the order a little bit because I just want to start by establishing the question that we had in hand about pausing the superintendent search. It is my sense after meeting with our subgroups, so I'm going to just put it out here that every, all our board members would like to continue the search and not pause it. So I'm just gonna look around the room, and I would like to see if any board member wants to speak, to, to talk about pausing it.
Just to talk about pausing?
Yeah, I mean, if there's any disagreement with that, can we just assume that we all want to move ahead and not pause the search? We're all in agreement about that.
Right, but you're saying, but you're not asking for discussion, you're only asking for decisions?
Well, the next item will be about the recommendation from our search firm to do a training. So would you like to have a discussion? Would you like to comment on not pausing the search, Laurel?
Um, thank you. However, did you know? I would, I just think it's very, um, obviously, we're in accord on this with Nishel, which is gratifying to hear. But I think it's important that, um, in this climate, and I remember bearing this in mind several times because you participated in several searches, as imperative, to get going, keep going, and do the work. And I think what I see happening on the board, I, I, the reason I wanted to talk is I, I don't agree that we're dysfunctional. Like, we passed a lot of things and done a lot of work this year. Probably more work than usual years from what I'm hearing. And so I, I found it, um, I thought that, um, it's, that's one way you can say, talk about something when things are changing. And yes, you have two new board members, and things are changing a little bit, but I'm also excited about the changes. And I have a lot of people and supporters who are super excited about the changes. And that doesn't mean they're bad, just means they're different. Sometimes changes happen. Thank you.
Great. Okay, so you just opened up, which is great, about our next discussion, which is, um, we, uh, our search firm, our advisory group, um, and a week ago, last Wednesday, recommended to the board, um, that they felt it would be really helpful and, and, and probably a really, really good step for us to have some kind of a training retreat to work on how we work together as a board. And they offered to do this training for us and recommended that we have two days to, you know, that we set aside two days to do this. And I just want to take a moment, and we can discuss the merits of that, or the not merits of it. And, uh, you know, we had talked earlier, and there was a lot of agreement about doing mediation and training as a group. So it is some, it is something we sort of identified as a board that we might benefit from. So I, I just want to remind us that this is, this, this was also our idea at some point. And, um, so I'm going to just leave it at that. And I know everyone, we were not all present at that meeting, but I know the two members who were not at the meeting had a chance to listen to the recording. So I appreciate that, to talk if they wanted to, to consult. So, um, I'm just gonna open enough to get people's thoughts about the doing the, the, um, the two-day, uh, training retreat on, uh, working together as a board, uh, to make decisions going forward. Any thoughts? Gordon?
Thanks. I'm, I'm willing to participate in anything like that, if that's what other people want to do. I'm, um, a little skeptical about where it's gonna go, it's only because I think that the things that we disagree about, you know, ultimately really are not personal things, or personality, or communication styles. But then, you know, we have within the board different visions of what we want to see happen in the school district, and that's okay. We come from different places, and it'll be, you know, that's really what's, certainly for me, that's really what's at stake here. And I don't, I don't think there's a way to erase that, or we just have to, the adults in color forward, however it comes out and comes out. I'm, I'm kind of in that sphere. I did want to say, um, a bit, you know, referring back to the last meeting. I said this to Superintendent Vanderkort personally, but I wanted to say out loud and in public also that I have a lot of respect for Dr. Vanderkort as a person, as an educator, as somebody who's given decades of work to this district. And somebody who goes, I've said, I think, did an exemplary job steering the district through the first year of the pandemic. We have a disagreement here, and it's a serious disagreement. I've said, I've said anything to hide that I have said in other meetings. But I agree with Alicia, we're all adults, we disagree on things. What we need to work on being able to disagree, even on serious things, if you can seriously disagree, while as much as possible, taking the edge off any, any personal side of the conversation. So I just want to say tonight that my disagreement with Superintendent Vanderkort on this issue does not cancel out my respect for her. And I know we can all come through this with mutual respect as much as possible. Thank you.
So, any board members want to talk about the training retreat? Yes, thank you. Thanks. Laurel?
I, I, I think it's, it's true that organizations work better once they know each other. We only know each other pretty when initially. The other part of that is that I do not, um, feel Alma's qualified to hold a safe retreat. I, my reasoning for that is because at the bias, um, training, that was gonna save space for me. And I've been in places where that kind of work can happen, and it can be safe, and people can make sure that everybody has a chance to talk, but also that people are not being attacked as well. Because I do think having conversations does, gets us closer to clarity and understanding of one another. I do not feel that just anyone can do this work. It is really hard work. And it's, and there are very few people, even in Arlington, that know how to do it well.
I'm going to just have thoughts on this. Maya?
Um, I am not one who usually feels as though we need to make a decision with consensus. But I feel like this is one of those where we either need to all be in, or else it's not gonna work. So I, I'm hearing Laurel, and I respect what she's saying. And it makes me wonder if, um, if a two-day retreat is going to serve the, the, if it will meet the intention by which we would be entering such a retreat. That's, that's what I would want to hear from my fellow board members, is if, if two days of a retreat feels like it's, it's the path that will lead us to a place where we, where we function best, which is hopeful for many good reasons. But, um, I, I, um, I'm a little, I'm a little concerned that we will be asking our board members who are very stuck for time and who might have to make arrangements in their lives that will, um, that are unexpected and maybe not as, as, um, as planned, because it's, it's easier for some of us than others, and I recognize that. And I just, if it's not going to end up serving the purpose, will the sacrifice of the time that is not readily available be worth it? And that's hard for me to say, because I'm somebody who believes that in order to be community, you have to build it first. And I think that we missed that, that part of our process way back when we became a board together. So on that note, I'm wondering if there's something that we can do to build the community that we need to do without necessarily calling for two days of retreat. And I'm also wondering if, um, if this decision might be easier, maybe if we have a better idea of exactly what Alma has in mind. Without knowing what Alma has in mind, it makes it more difficult for, for the decision to, to feel like someone's entering a safe space. And I don't mean to say it for you, Laurel, but it feels like that might be an important detail that we're missing out.
Can I respond to that? Just as I know, I actually, just before this meeting, thought that question may come up. So I did try and get hold of them, and I did find out, like, first of all, I completely agree. I don't know if we all, like, consensus from the point of view that I want to participate. But I, I believed what I was told. Uh, what, what I was told is that there would be a, a, uh, check-in with each person individually to get their expectations and sort of build the, uh, the foundation of the agenda for the retreat the first day, you know? And so it would be an individual phone call or Zoom, whatever. So that's where I can start. In terms of the content, I think it would be developed a little bit individually based on what those individual conversations came up with. So I don't have in depth to say, cause, uh, but, but that was pretty consistent, because as you know, I have been interviewing other people at the request of the board. It's taken a while, but I have probably talked to eight different people that could potentially do this, and they, and none of them want to do it in public. They all start with individual interviews, and this, this is a pathway. And I'll, I'm writing out all my notes as I'm having.
Can I follow up my questions, since I know that we've talked to them today now? Um, at our meeting yesterday in the subcommittee with Mary, yourself, and me, um, we, you, you brought up the question of whether, um, this was a deal breaker for Alma, and I'm wondering if you asked that question, you would not ask that?
I deliberately did not ask that question. First of all, I just didn't want that to be part, I, I don't know, I, I don't know. I mean, I did not. And so I don't know what the response would be, truly. So, um, I feel like that would be something we'd have to ask them together directly, um, or not. I don't know. If this is our decision as a board, and should not be done because we feel, we're gonna lose, you know, lose them if we don't. Do you know what I mean? I didn't want to remind you that. So thank you for asking that, but I deliberately did. Well, Alicia?
Thanks, Judy. Um, thanks, Maya, for, uh, calling out that it is a big sacrifice for some of us. And I'm one of those people. Um, just because I had a trip planned, but I will be there if we, as a board, decide to, to do it. You know, I was, I don't know, I was a little skeptical. I actually talked to the folks from Alma, grilled them a little. Um, and, uh, I appreciated that, you know, there was, this probably isn't going to change, but, oh, I hate when I can't remember people's names. Who did I talk to? Who's the Alma person?
Monica.
Monica, thank you. God, I wish I had that skill, and I don't have a name remembering skill. But, you know, Monica talked about being in a place of hope, and I thought that was interesting. So a couple of things, let's try to be more concise here. I want people to feel safe. I think sometimes facilitators make mistakes, and we need to, um, I'm not saying they did or didn't, but I want people to feel safe. I know what it's like, because my first thing to Judy was, if we do this, I need a completely accessible spot, because I don't want to have to be, you know, dealing with running down the street to find the bathroom at McDonald's or something. So I need things to, to, to work out. But also, you know, we just had an interaction in the previous meeting where Laurel called point of order, and she challenged me on a word I used. And I was able to say, okay, well, if I use that word, you can't hear me anymore. And I think that if we, as a board, figure out a way to come together, and maybe not agree on even how we get there or where we go, but on how we are together, um, and that, you know, I think we've got to give it a shot. And I just hope everybody feels like it will be productive, because I think that's what's most important, is that we can bring our, maybe not our whole selves, because that is a big core, but at least our open-minded selves to, to this work. So I'd be curious what other, uh, board members think. Um, I definitely was on the fence. Little bit of the meeting earlier made me kind of go, yeah, might be a good idea to get to know each other and to get to know, you know, what's hard for people to hear, and what are the words that kind of are triggers and things like that. So that's my two cents.
And, yeah.
Go ahead.
Gordon, okay.
Thanks. Um, I, I just, I have two questions. One is, um, in terms of public meeting law, is, is all of this, you know, publicly broadcast? Cause that's, that's certain kind of tinge. Is the answer yes?
That, that, I don't answer that, because I wasn't sure either, and because that's what I said. Everyone I talked to wanted to know about this. So, and that's why someone asked me before the meeting if I knew this was gonna be the agenda. All I knew was, uh, I sat with our council and Monica to see if there was a way. And, and it was, and, and so, uh, I thought she was just gonna bring it up at the end of the meeting. So I didn't know until the meeting. But, but what we've, uh, after the conversation, the takeaway was yes, there is a way. And we, we can't talk about, if, we, we can do it on a personal level, it's about interaction skills, and we can use fictitious kinds of these situations. We can't talk about anything that we're deliberating immediately on the board or that would come to the future. It's not, so, uh, I think there was a, in the end, there was definitely agreement that it couldn't be done. So.
Okay, like, good. Good. Thank you. My, the one other thing is, I would be interested in seeing, um, you said you always say that, so what is the plan? And I'm kind of interested in seeing, like, what is the goal? And I know that, if you could say, I think the general law is to get along somewhere, but are there more, I guess for me, a more concrete, we can be, if we could say, okay, we, we, that we're gonna make decisions in this way, even if we're not talking about, um, any specific issues that constitute board business and, right?
Great suggestion. Laurel?
Well, uh, I mean, a big problem on this board is equity concerns. And if we can't talk about stuff that we can talk about at the board meeting, I, I don't see how it's gonna work.
Well, maybe we should get, I, you know, I'm really shooting in the dark with that. I was there, and there was some reassurance. So I don't know, if just talking about equity and how we personally feel is, I, I think getting the agenda would probably be a really good ask. So I don't know how to answer that, Laurel. So, thank you. I mean, that's a good question. Absolutely. Well, we got what we need out of it. Um, anyone that hasn't spoken on anything that I want to add or feelings related to it? Mary?
I, I, I think we should do it. I think we should try. I echo Gordon's questions, like, what's the goal? If, uh, we can't talk about what's going on, I don't know how we can not talk about decisions we might be making. I think two are acceptable. And then it sounds like we don't have an agreement on who either yet, so it's, that's what I'm sorry.
Okay, the, the, today, the conversation is specifically about whether we would take them up on that offer, I believe. So, um,
It's, no, it's not about how we want it, it's about who.
Well, I think their picture mixed, because I know we couldn't get someone in short order. And I'm not sure, I just don't know how fast I can help. So let me just see if you're a little, should, let me give you a little bit about timelines and, is that, but Maya, do you have a comment versus?
I, I just, in terms of the who, um, if the intention of this is specific to the, uh, process of hiring a superintendent, it seems that it would be maybe counterproductive to not do it with Alma, as they're the ones who we're directly working with on this particular decision. Whether or not that's appealing or not is a different question, but I, I don't think that, um, the, the conversations we've had about mediation or trainings in other contexts is the same as this very specific goal-oriented retreat, which is focused on this very major decision.
Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna, for the sake of the conversation, make a suggestion, because we, you know, I, I think, so I think everyone has really good points here, like, to figure out what the goal of the retreat is, what the agenda. And most importantly, I'm gonna, I, I think, I agree with you, you gotta feel comfortable with the facilitator. So, uh, what I think might be a good thing, since, since what she said, definitely her first step in the process is to talk individually. If people would, you know, if, if after we each talked individually, there was someone who would not feel safe in it, we don't do it. So I'm gonna just say that that would be an important thing, because we can't go in that way. Right? So have that happen, and get an agenda. Proceed as if we all agree this is a good idea, we are willing to try it. Uh, and to your point, Maya, it's not, it's like the first step, I think, and Laurel, you know, we never really got to know each other. You know, this might be a really first step, because we do have some big decisions. And, and not that we're gonna always agree, it's not about agreeing, it's about how can we be less, maybe make, make fewer, um, I don't want to say mistakes, mistakes are our issues, but just be able to, to have conversations more, trusting each other more, knowing each other more, and disagreeing in a, in a good way or something. I don't know. I don't know what I'm trying to say. Might improve our ability to work and get even more done. So, go ahead, Gordon.
I think maybe this is already clear by now. If we can get an agenda from that before we have an individual conversation, that would be good. And I will, uh, my opinion, but if the, the rest of the board wants to do something, I'll possibly participate. Except, you know, with the caveat, if you said, if there's anybody who feels uncomfortable with the process with Alma, I'd say we can do it.
Well, go ahead. I don't, I don't think that getting the agenda ahead of the individual conversations, uh, makes sense for me personally, only because I imagine that the individual conversations would inform what the agenda slash goals would look like. And I'm wondering, just even if we don't take that next step of meeting together, having those, I, I really appreciated a month or two ago when we had that opportunity for the one-on-one conversations. So even if we don't take that next step, I think that we would get a lot out of having the opportunity to have an interaction directly with Alma folks. But I just, I think that, that if we get the agenda ahead of those conversations, we're not gonna have a well-formed form agenda.
Good point. I don't know who we started there.
I would say, I, from what our meeting, I really don't know how they plan to do any of this. And so it's somewhat of a misgiving. So I would love to see something about their plans around how this works before. I mean, I'll say, yes, I'll do this, but I would like that with the caveat that we will have a, a lot of information about what, what the plan is. Because if you're not well versed on this, you can't, you can't just wing it. It has to be, um, still a lot of people think they can. So I would love to see exactly what the, the plan is. How, and not, I know it did, they can be just like an outline. I'd like to know what the plan is. Cause she talked a little bit about, about it, just that it's only about teaching the board how to work well together. And, um, but, you know, there was no substance to that. There was, I mean, I could.
Yeah. So I don't see any reason why we couldn't do the final things, you know, consistent training. And, and you're right, it might get, she might say, and this would be tailored to what I hear from people, this part of the agenda, or how I approach it, but to ask what goals and what your process is, you know? So I, I think everyone has really good points on it, but we could probably get enough to at least have a better idea.
I shouldn't have determined what was mentioned.
That's all right. No, that was totally all of us, no, right?
Yeah, I mean, I assume that they've done this before, and even if we just tell, okay, here's an agenda we did once before, because I understand what you're saying, Maya, right? They, they're gonna need to do it based on what we say. And maybe you're a, um, a more advanced thinker than I am, and I start, okay, but I need something in my hands. So no, like, I would look at it and say, well, don't do this part, this looks like it works, and there's something missing here. So even if it's not a plan for us, but something they've done elsewhere, it'll go to be useful for me to be able to react to.
To your question, yes, this is something they do actually a lot of. And that's actually was a big part of their advisory group, even before they got these superintendent searches. So they would have at least a sense of what it would be. So I think that's very right. Maya?
Um, so, related to this, the kind of coming from a side conversation based back to the decision we made to continue our search. And I know there's a meeting tomorrow, but it's, you know, Mary and the Alma folks. I'm hoping that we can, um, plan to have the information that was supposed to come to us last week's work session, um, maybe at the next, at the next board meeting, so that we can continue the momentum of our superintendent search. Because until we approve those qualifications and skills, or whatever that list is called, then we can't, we can't do the, the executive session work that we'll need to do to make sure that we stay on, on schedule. So, um, I just want to make sure that that conversation happens and that the plan is put in place to, to get that information to us and also to, to honor the community that puts so much time and energy into giving input. Cause I think they're eager to, to hear how their input, one of the questions that they had in the meetings sessions was how will you, how would you like to know that your input was heard? And if we don't get to that conversation, that won't ever even be a possibility.
Okay. That will be on the agenda. So let me just give you, I, I, I've done a little light work, because these things, they usually take a lot of lead time. So I just tried to get people's availability, that either are working, I do know this Saturday, a weekend, people are working. And then I also knew people already had sent in dates for travel, um, you know, to the calendar. And I also just wanted to get a sense of Alma's calendar. Again, I wasn't making any decisions, I was just getting information, so we did go in that direction. So there were two potential dates that were two weekends in the near future, without making it go way out. One, which is the reason for this conversation tonight, is that weekend of, let me speak, the, like, the weekend of the February 25th, it's the sixth, 25th, sixth, seventh, however we go in there. And this, and that, so that's coming right up. And everyone, everyone's available, we think we can find an accessible space as we want to. So the second weekend, which isn't interfering with no travel plans, but it's the first weekend of spring break. So it's March 18th, you know, 18th, 19th, 20th, and there. So those were the only two that were, like, someone who wasn't gonna be not present. So. Gordon?
Sorry, I'm a week on that, we, the spring break we have.
We'll be gone those dates that we took before.
I'm, I'm fine with the temporary days, but not that.
I haven't bought my plane tickets yet, so I'm in good shape, but if, if this had been a week ago, I would have been not in good shape. Laurel?
I would like to know, um, I guess you'll know this in the meeting tomorrow. I don't want to wait until this before Alma to continue to do their, their, all their steps. So I would like to know definitively what their plans are, um, hopefully tomorrow. Because, uh, you know, um, I'm not sure all of us, but especially people that work 60 hours a week, hope the weekend's there. So yes, I could do February, but I want to make sure that it's not like, well, nothing's gonna happen until then. I want things to be happening, and then this to be part of it.
That's really fair. And I think even showing that we're getting a date schedule, I'd say, yeah, I can speak for them, I don't know. But I would definitely, Mary and I will communicate that tomorrow.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm also good with February, but cannot do the spring break dates, so I have not provided for the, I think somebody does to please again.
So we, we have one date that will work if we all are, okay. Mary?
I've not changed much stuff around, but I'm wondering, does Alma have the capacity to interview all of us and put a plan together, you know, a week? I, I just, which is what we're talking about. And do we have this, the space, what are we thinking about? What, I dumped us all on our staff at the last minute.
I've done some light work on this, because I, that, so, and Lisa and I have spoken that, um, I've got a totally worked on this because I that so uh and Lisa and I have spoken that um and again, it's gotta be a fully expected accessible space, so we have about three or four options, one.
That's not my my home, sorry.
We we can get a space.
My my question was about their capacity to interview seven people, individually. Prepare an agenda, you know, that's my question.
I can't speak for them?
It's like it's gonna be hard to target schedules, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I I think um you're right. Uh I will will ask that question tomorrow and see if I can make that timeline. And I personally, those of us, I I think it's especially important that anyone is iffy about working with them, that they should definitely be prioritized to have an interview before we get, you know, that that's all I'm saying, but we also be able to be inter have interview before we meet. So some of us might wanna go sooner than others if we're not sure, does that make sense?
Well, for coaching, do they wanna meet all of us?
They do, but I think I I think to your question, if I think they probably, they definitely, because they were not she told me that was her process, this was a date that worked for them. So I'm certain she has capacity to talk to them before the retreat, so I can answer that. Whether they can talk to each other, everyone next week, I can wait to talk to them and other, you know, and so if someone, if that's part of when you're thinking about if this is gonna work, they should go first for the conversations. Does that clear as much, does that make sense? Please tell me if it doesn't.
And just at the end, this conversation, I'd like you to recap what thing we've decided. Um and then is it two full days, like nine to nine, nine five, noon to six?
Well, that was so if it's two full days and we could do, but now if some of us are signed up for the Freedom Dinner Friday night, we could we could either start Friday night and not do that, just do and then do all day Saturday and half on Sunday. Or we could just do all day Saturday and Sunday.
I I'm going for free.
Okay. If if we're talking preferences, I I strongly prefer to have Friday nights, like day working, right?
Okay. We have two people with a strong preference, others?
No, one Friday night.
I I got the plan of Friday night. Then it would be Saturday and Sunday, okay? That would be it. Okay, now you read that.
Do we need to sign up for snack, spring?
There'll be food, I promise. Okay, so let me recap where I think we are. Everyone, oh Alicia, go ahead.
I was just gonna recap, so I'll shut up and let you do that.
Yeah, please, you recap.
Well, I I just had um que- questions actua- well, okay. So what I'm hearing is that we are committed to that Friday and Saturday that we'll talk, um we'll have, we have the expectation that Alma will talk with all of us as they prepare their agenda. My question was, are we as a group committed to then doing this? Or are we giving an out? Are we saying that we can uh opt out if something doesn't feel right and any one of us can opt out? Uh that's what I'm a little confused about. I kind of am hearing people saying, I'm committed, I'll work through it, but I'm not sure if I heard correctly. So that's, those are my questions, Judy, and if you have an answer, great.
Laura has something, yeah.
Well, part of my work being a transformed um social worker is that anybody can always opt out if they don't feel like they're in space, that is um.
True, true.
But but what I heard was that everybody's opting in and as from what we know right now, which we have a lot of constituents, that everybody's opting to give up their weekend for for a day full of this. So um that's what I.
Laura?
Um yeah, I just think this is all because it's pending everybody come to Alma, if somebody come, you know, if any one, for me, if any one of us says, oh yeah, after I talked to Alma and I said the agenda, I don't feel comfortable doing this, then I I I think we have to be, you know, either all feel comfortable or or it's not worth it.
Um okay, so then I would say we have a meeting in a week that we should know by next Wednesday if anyone's gonna hop out because they will be traveling. That seems only fair, but for the most part, we're proceeding with good faith that this is gonna work out. Right? Martina?
Um that that's that's definitely the sense I'm getting and I'm I'm happy to report, I think Alicia, I appreciate your recap. The only thing is um we said Friday and Saturday, and I just wanna be clear, it's Saturday, Sunday that we talk about. Easy mistake to make, but I just wanted to say that, I'll left the record.
Laura? Laura?
Um I'm making a motion that we um I'm not gonna do it as well as you, but I'm gonna do it, but I'm gonna try, um that we we have a retreat with Alma and that we will get information before this re we expect to receive information concerning this retreat before it happens from Alma. Um I would also like to add, and if somebody wants to mend this, tell me that, but that this is not something staff have to come to work on a weekend for, I I find that disturbing. If I was a staff person, I would, I I don't think it's necessary and I don't wanna create that.
But thank you for clarifying, we can leave that out because no staff will be involved with this.
Because yeah, so that was my, yeah, thank you for short, I mean um one motion.
Okay, so you wanna repeat repeat your motion or anything?
We don't, we don't, we don't vote during work session.
Yeah. This is this is.
Mary and I will.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry.
Um yeah, so I yeah, sure, verbatim, that one just um that I that we have a retreat, a weekend retreat on the twenty, the the twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth?
Twenty-sixth and seventh.
Twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh with Alma pending um only that we are asking for additional information before that retreat. So do we have a second?
Martina's second, so Laura has moved and Martina's second, is there any further discussion?
I just wanna do a friendly amendment that it's barring anyone um deciding that they are no longer.
By next Wednesday?
Yes, yes. Because if you're excited, I gotta give you that.
Yeah, one okay with that friendly amendment? Okay, Mary?
I still wish I knew a little more, like is it nine AM to five PM, noon to six? I just, you know, like, so I can plan the rest of my weekend. So some some sense of the time would be very helpful with this.
Can we ask ma- we could ask tomorrow and make sure we email that up to the board, because we'll be meeting with them, I don't feel like they can, thank you. Any other discussion? Then let's call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hands and say aye, aye?
Aye.
The the motion passes unanimously, seven to all. Okay? So one last thing before we close the meeting, oh, go ahead, Mike?
Um this is just a total aside, some people say it's not appropriate, but if if travel arrangements allow and Monica is here, can we reserve the seat at the Freedom Table so we can at least extend that invitation to her? Um again, I hope it's a.
Please, it said we have room, so the answer is yes.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Great. So the 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 last thing before we close the meeting is, does anyone have any future agenda items that they want the to the um to be put on the in the agenda um for future meetings at this point? Laura?
I'm trying to find that. Um if somebody has something ahead of me. Um um do you want to do one at a time or do it all together?
Sure, I think we should have a discussion about uh to clarify our board's policy about board calendar. Um I I agree very clearly, it says it can only be changed with by the board with proper notice, and so I would like to make, maybe we need to um just make sure that wording is very clear and and how that happens. I don't know, or you know, have a discussion on how that policy needs to read in order, because it reads very clearly to me, but I for some reason, people said it didn't mean that, which is disturbing. I'd also like um I would I ha- I would like to have a discussion and it doesn't like a less leadership decide when this comes in, but the interim superintendent it appointment policy work in the fact that um I think there should be a clarification in our policy between interim and um permanent superintendent appointment. Um I do agree that we don't want to overstep in that work, but I would like to have um a comp, I would like to have again clearer be a clear in the policy about how that works. And I have heard in other other districts, there is a difference in their, how they write up how what interim and regular superintendents can do. Um I also wanna make, as I say, that's how I get to be known. There is, the reason you want to be careful in this, and this is some of my research I've done as this has come up, is that we don't want to be the board, you know, at like a newber where they they see what I'm trying to say. You don't wanna impose so many rules that the superintendent can't do their job in a in a in a way. And you also don't wanna be the the board that says our opinions matter more than the law that you're following. So that's that's not my intent behind that, my intent is there to be clarity and transparency, which means almost anybody who looks at it can understand it. And then I, the last thing is a um I wa- I wonder if there could be a discussion about if we could have two co-chairs for the leadership because it seems like there's a lot of work happening and I don't know if this is something that can or cannot happen, but um and I'm not saying, hey, pick me, I'm saying that it'd be a good conversation for the board to have, if there's a lot of work in a year, can there be another part of leadership to kind of alleviate some of that work?
Right? Is that your last? I don't know, great, anything else? Then I wanted to ask, are there head nods, some of that, do you have any head nods on versus? Oh, well, I thought we were just talking about moving the vote, yes, we have head nods for every for.
I've heard them as agenda requests.
Okay.
So that's all.
Can they go to the leadership and recycle that, or do you wanna get head nods in the, what is it?
Let's do, I well, well, it's ex- oh, I'm I'm sorry, you can't mic. Um, well, the progress rules is actually a vote and it doesn't have to be a majority vote, it is it um.
I think our working agreements, there are three people want these on the agenda, they'll vote to leadership to put on the agenda, or we can deal with it.
Okay. Well, that's a type of a vote, so.
Yeah, so yeah, it's like, it's sort of what you're saying, so yeah. So the uh the board calendar and clarifying, you know, when you can change meetings and how that works. Do we have any people who would like that on the agenda, we have one, two, three, okay. Um the interim superintendent looking at our policy to see if we want to differentiate in the policy or call out specifically main, if a midterm superintendent has the same. Okay, looking at that policy, so we have one, two, three, okay. And um the idea of co-chairs versus chair and vice chair, are you looking at that as chair or vice?
No, I'm, because I think that would be really confusing, sorry, I thought it would be a chair and two co-chairs, because it.
I think we can't because there's three, there's three board members, so we have to be having all the leadership meetings online and.
What, would it make a committee then, or we'd have to say it's a committee, wouldn't we?
Maybe it's a committee. No, I think if there's three board members and, but I.
It it sounds like maybe this is something that we should explore, put on, may and maybe, I don't know how you feel about this, but maybe we could put it towards the end of the year as we're getting closer to the time that we would be having a discussion about um the coming years chair and vice chair, just for timing purposes.
Well, do you wanna go, Laura?
I'm just thinking, my understanding is on the um higher, uh sorry, the committee, the subcommittee that's dealing with Alma that you're rotating, that it's like you and Laura the person at each meeting, so maybe there's a way to do, if if we decide, well, we wanted to have co-chairs, maybe it's a it's a possibility, it's not it's not really impossible.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm suggesting, that maybe we would do have a whole discussion, is that I I think we're trying to have the discussion right now and maybe we could just put it on the agenda um for the year, yeah.
Sure, and and I'm just gonna say leadership structure.
Well. I I I don't, sorry, I don't agree with the end of the year because the I think that issues are happening now, but it's a ton of work, so I would I would put it on there soon.
I I was just a di- suggesting towards the end of the year because we have so many things upcoming and I you know, as we're getting closer to the time that we're gonna start talking about next year's leadership, it might just be a financial um thing to do, financial um co-lesson. So that's why I was making that suggestion, um if if folks have strong feelings about it being earlier, we can put like a calendar. Um but again, the calendar is really, really full, so that's, I just wanted to be like open about my suggestion about where it would be.
So um we have three people, first of all, that wanna look at the leadership structure and considering different leaderships.
Sure. Hand this raised.
Uh. Well, Alicia?
Um I just, i- i- it seems like there's a problem and we're giving an answer to it to increase leadership versus how do we help leadership now um with their workload? Also just point out that if you do add a third person, that means no one gets to rotate into leadership. And I think that is helpful, so probably should have saved those for a later time, but I was thinking about them now, thanks.
So if you have three people who want it, we will take it and look at the our work plan, calendar, see where we can fit it. Yes, okay. Okay. And the very last thing, I just want you to see on your agenda, there um the next meetings that are scheduled, we have a regular board meeting on a week from today, the twenty-third, and we have a training on March seventh, which is in sort of in the calendar with um board roles and responsive equity governance.
Who is that? Who is that with?
That is with Vince Adams and Lou, um and then I got his name right here. Um Lou, um Lou Whitebeare. So it's equity governance and it it has to do with uh roles and responsibilities, but in the context of equity governance, the governance Vince Adams is an OSBA trainer, but he's also on Core Balance School Board. And Lou Whitebeare is a member of the um Color Conference for OSBA and onboard, so.
And is that, just so that's Monday, March seventh?
That's been in the calendar, yeah.
Uh uh.
I just have more details, yeah.
Is it five thirty?
It's at five thirty.
Thank you.
I virtually, yes.
Do we have um again an agenda of what that's about?
Yes.
That's going to be in that, or do we already have it, I didn't see that?
No, we don't have it, I it was been in the agenda, I've been waiting to get finalized who's gonna do the training, now we can get the agenda out. This one, this, that one is, just trying to keep people in the loop that way, but it's been in the Friday memo on the schedule. I'm just telling you the presenters and now we'll get the agenda. Oh, thank you, Laura. Yeah.
Do we need to vote on adding what we talked about earlier as far as the equity lens and working on the policy for for the equity lens, or do you already?
We have a work session on that because we've already talked about, and that's where we will have.
Talk about the.
Yeah, it's already in, okay, yeah, okay. So with that, I'm going to adjourn this um board meeting.
Uh huh.
And I'm gonna say specifically, it's seven fifty-two.
Uh let's come back.
Promptly at eight o'clock or two starts the executive session. So I guess this is time that our guests leave and we get to use the restroom.